Ask Lord that you be with us and guide us through our discussions this morning and the items that we'll take up for action items. Lord, we're just grateful for the sunshine and the warm weather, Lord, and just give you all the praise and glory for the majesty and the beauty of your creation. Lord, just thank you for those that we serve here in Lebleef County. And as we do make those decisions this morning, may they best work for our friends and neighbors in a way that we can all be proud of. Lord, we just love you. Thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have minutes for March 4th, and I want to look at those quickly myself.
It'll be March 4th. Do we have minutes for March 4th? Yeah.
Okay, once you've had the chance to review, I would entertain motion to approve.
I mean, you can step out.
Is there something you're looking at that modified?
No, he was, no, he was going on. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for March 4th as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes for March 4th as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, minutes approved. Next, we had, we distributed copies of the wastewater, not really the wastewater agreement, but some research that Linda had done regarding.
So it looks like. Actually, and so for just a point of Charlotte, actually.
Yeah, Charlotte did that, but. And she wasn't going to be able to make it this far. So Linda, give us a little backdrop. I think in some discussion, if my, if I'm correct, what we budgeted for last year and what we actually inferred.
Was it down?
Yeah. And then so that brought up the question as to should we look at these fees and make any changes?
We had been running around up to four thousand, basically is what we had written in our agreement that it would be up to that, but it would also be the unfunded portion. So typically up to four thousand, but also the unfunded portion. The septic inspections, wastewater treatment that the health department manages, does the inspections for. Last year, we jumped to five thousand six hundred and forty, which was a significant step up. And so then the conversation began, is it due to the number of inspections that's happening? So I called Charlene to ask, and she said that their activity had increased, which is why the charge came due to quantity of numbers. But it also brings about the ability to look at, is the charges that each individual is incurring at a place, because they've never been changed, is it at a place where it needs to be reviewed and considered again? And so she did some rework in counties surrounding us and presented that.
No, they've seen this, and I grabbed it from you. But there's the existing contract we have with the health department. Looks like it expires at the end of this month. So I'm assuming they will present another one?
They're going to have a meeting. I think she said before, which is why they were looking to know before they have their meeting and approve the contract.
They wanted an idea if we were going to.
On these sewage inspections, who called in to inspect? Do they, before anybody can? How does that work? Do they just decide to do so on their own, or how's that?
As I understand, those that dig septic systems know that there has to be authorization.
Okay, so you're talking about through your excavators and people and stuff that do that. So they call ahead, just like you would for Dig Right and that type of stuff.
They would tell you if you were digging, you need to get an inspection permit from the health department. You go to the health department, pay your fee to have them come out and inspect. They do that, they give you the permit, and this is overview, I haven't done it myself, but then they give you that permit, and then here you go, you can now dig.
And it says B is not really used, the two hundred dollars.
Yeah. She said those are advanced systems, and they don't have that many of them.
Probably the ones on small lots that they have to pump back up or recycle.
Or maybe larger manufacturing or something like that. She said occasionally it can get into, it could get into a lot of callbacks if they just aren't getting it right. But she goes that they just don't have that many of that. They may have a first time, and they may have a second time, but she goes typically by the second time, they've got it.
Okay, so with that, that four thousand dollar, basically there you're talking about that was a cap, yet we paid fifty-six forty.
Because that was unfunded. We hadn't ever went that high before. It was unfunded through the state, it was some kind of a grant through wastewater or has funding for that, plus the participant pays, and so four thousand had always been our cap that we were able to manage within due to the quantities, suppose. And maybe the fee structure, I don't know. So, and then, you know, she could better explain her side of the funding for that. But we just, she said due to quantities, we went over that four thousand and caused that fifty-six forty.
Yeah.
And they have them this year.
All right, well, I'm a little bit, I'm confused, just a little bit. Four thousand payable to a system operating the onsite inspection program.
Correct.
And then I look back up here at B, onsite sewage system inspections, and maybe that's not the same thing. It says it's not really used, so.
There are two different sections. One's the one twenty-five, the other one's the two hundred. There's two types of inspections.
Okay. We pay them how it's part of four thousand dollars currently, annually?
Typically, we didn't pay them four thousand.
Never reached that high?
I've never got that high.
Okay, last year, we paid them fifty-six forty. For what?
The unfunded portion of septic inspections.
Was it because their funds went down, or because there was a whole lot more activity? We don't know the answer to that. Or their costs went up? That's what I'm saying. You got all of those that we don't know the variables of, yeah.
You know, it might be helpful if we had the invoice
Mike's got.
that Mike has, and that may help fill some blanks in for you. And that way you can actually see what made up that fifty-six hundred dollars.
Could have.
Okay, because they'll put on there by their employee what that was, and they'll have their mileage on there.
Per portion.
So they can see that detail, that might help.
And that is the expense. We're talking probably a time factor for that employee, mileage. That was the fifty-six forty. Have nothing to do with the fees, because those are payable by the consumer.
Okay.
Yeah, should be by your excavator, your homeowner, yeah.
And then I don't know how we would go about knowing what the construction was in Lebleef County. But I would think that we've seen more activity in the county. You know, again, I'll use out there where I live where a parcel lands being split off, and now you see three or four homesides or something that will be a home site. And, you know, as much as both of you travel, I'm sure that, you know, as you drive around and hey, there's a new house going in there, or, you know, it looks like somebody's putting in some tiny homes here or something like that, so.
Is the hundred dollars and the hundred and twenty-five or two hundred dollars, does that go into the kitty to offset these costs?
I believe that is a true statement. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Basically, that comes from the end user.
Right.
And then we take care of the rest, up to the four thousand, is the way I understand.
I remember one year, and I don't, when it was, two, three, four, five years ago, we only incurred thirty-some hundred dollars in fees that year, if you will, or charges. It didn't exceed what we budgeted. So if that is the case, that we've seen growth in the county, then do we, do we look at that as a trend? Or do we look at that as maybe now it's a flatline? And if it's flatlined, then do we just adjust any rates accordingly? Or do we look at it like, okay, let's go another year with this, and then see, you know, do those numbers come back down?
I don't believe you have enough information as a trend yet unless we, I mean, as far as trending, like you said, there's just not enough information to do that. This could be a little burst. So, yeah, more of that is.
And if you look at some of the economic data that we were provided here a week or two ago, the growth rate between now and 2029s, percentage-wise, is not a lot. So from those numbers, what would the projected growth look like? And it doesn't look like, you know, the county necessarily is going to see a surge in population. And then if you look at the last census tract data, virtually every census tract in the county had a slight decline, not an increase. But then you get to the situation where you have a larger parcel now that's being split into multiple parcels. Then I think possibly that's what's driving this as well. So the population trend may not have any correlation to this at all.
Right, because I think, like you're saying there, that what happens is we're getting places separated, not just place out in the area there that is sold and been split up into smaller parcels. But we also have, Little Johnny is now married, and he's putting in place that mom and dad's. And Suzie's also using the east side of mom and dad's place, and I think that's a lot.
Some of that crap because they can't fly a Ford.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, thanks, Lord. So I'd say that's probably part of it too, because of all of that going on, you know.
Is it bad?
Well, I can, it could be a combination of a little blurry and my eyesight.
It's poor.
So I think one of the questions that was raised, Linda, while you were gone, these user fees go into the pot money.
Yes.
And then if it exceeds that, that's what we're, if it exceeds our budgeted amount, then that's what we're paying the increase of. Is that, I mean, that's kind of my understanding anyway, that.
See, and that's where the unfunded expenses.
Yeah.
So was it your and the previous commission's feeling that you were trying to keep the fees and the fee structure down for the residents by allotting the four thousand dollars per year?
I would say, Eric, it was more based upon just the historical perspective that we have a wastewater ordinance. We weren't trying to suppress the fees or the growth or anything like that.
That's the same.
It's the same.
So, no, it wasn't that we were, established the fees based upon any, anything other than probably historical information, just like the year I said that we probably came in below that amount.
You say below that amount, but it was money that you put in too.
Well, we put, we budgeted the four thousand or whatever it was to help offset those fees.
Okay, so I may need some counterpoints on my next statement.
Okay.
My business mind goes to, if it can be done in a relatively competitive fashion, why wouldn't I want to make this be able to stand alone and me not fund? Or the county not fund the extra? Now, I said in a clear.
So basically, you're going to increase the funding, the cost from the one twenty by one fifty there from two hundred and two and a quarter?
That's where my mind goes, if it can be done in a competitive. I mean, you know, I don't want the big county space to be three times a neighbor county. That's not my rhetoric, but that's just where my mind's on with that, so.
Yeah, so maybe, Eric, it would take a little deeper dive into the statutes, because if you look at the information that was provided, here's Felt slash Mary's County, the commission slash health department no longer does inspections and or permitting for wastewater systems. I think it falls back to the state. And I think that's the conversation I had with the Poleski County Commissioner Training. And here it says that their commission health department recently rescinded their ordinance, which that might be something, so if the question becomes do nothing, then we need to rescind our ordinance. And certainly we need to do this before this one expires then, so the health department would know. But in the case of Poleski County, it says their reasoning was program was costing too much, and increasing fees wasn't a solution. So, and then you have other county, Webster is a commercial slash business is one twenty, single homes are ninety. Dallas County, a basic systems two hundred, advanced system four hundred, and it says they just recently increased their fees. So it looks like it's all over the board. And I think part of this will be statute-driven. Do we have to provide this? I think one time, some of the research that I did early on, and I'm really testing my memory now, is at one time, we actually allowed Wright County to do inspections for Lebleef County, if I'm not mistaken. Now, now, I'm on record as saying that, but that goes back probably five, six years ago, maybe when I first came on board, and I was trying to wrap my mind around it a little bit. So I reserve the right to be wrong on video.
You bet. Yeah, what I'm seeing here, I mean, I'm sitting here, I've put things together.
Because I remember.
In twenty-three, we had total expenses eighty-five, thirty-eight, ninety-five, and the income at seventy-four, forty-one, oh, three, at the one twenty-five. And then if you look at the twenty-fours, the total expenses was actually less, it's only eight thousand fifteen seventy-eight. And then plus ten nine seventy-two, ninety-two there. But then they have a total income here of less by a huge amount, to the thirty-three, forty-eight. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's almost telling me the state decided.
Somebody's lost some. Mm-hmm. Yeah, they've lost some funding somewhere as well. Because as far, but they're saying their total income, expenses was, and income is four thousand dollars difference. So.
So here we go, back again to the state, so the county's.
See, look, the difference right there. Nine, nine seventy-two, ninety-two versus fifty-six, forty-seven. So, yeah, the reserve and buy can pump it all on us, basically, is what I'm kind of coming up with there, like that comparison.
Potentially, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, without, there you go again, without, like, you said, diving into it deeper.
Yeah.
Usually comparing twenty-three to twenty-fours. Twenty-fours is what we're talking about for twenty-fives.
What was in the original page?
Linda, the contract?
Yeah.
Contract, Linda, do you have it again?
I want to see if it's catchy.
I didn't see one.
That's a one twenty-five. And two hundred.
It is, it's in there. You still, that'd be part, that'd be part of your end.
It is.
Because it's not.
But for some reason.
It don't happen that often. Or whatever they're going on to decide on what's what. And that would be back on the health department. That would be right.
Okay, so that's not per deal. This is, this is a license, that hundred dollar, it's kind of a license for certified installers?
It's per.
Oh, it is per. Okay, so that's not just a one-time thing?
Program of registered installers. See, so that has to go every time.
I could bring up regular stuff too.
Well, the deal is your verbiage, registered installers. You know, and that's the other thing with them putting in their system and stuff, there could be a lot of lagoons that aren't getting inspected.
Oh, there's probably no.
I'm not just saying that could have dropped.
So here, here might be something that we could do on this would be, this contract comes up at the end of the month. Let's gather our facts and then bring this up next week. Now, Joe, is, am I?
It's changed.
Learned that you're okay now, you can meet next Tuesday?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so.
I was going to bring that up and.
Okay.
Table, yes, that's correct.
Okay, then let's bring this back up next Tuesday with with answers to some of the questions. Would that be okay?
And she might be able to.
Yeah. And I think that would bring some, I'd say additional clarity, it may bring all the clarity.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so let's table that until next week, okay? Next item on the agenda was, we had received a request from the adult drug court, Judge Winfrey's requesting distribution, two distributions out of the opioid fund. And I'll pass these down. One is an amount of fifteen hundred and thirty dollars, and the other is an amount of three hundred dollars. And so when we pass our budget, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars out of opioid settlement fund for possible requests and uses of those funds. And these would be the first two that we've had for that. So after you've reviewed those, if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer those. And working with Judge Winfrey over the last year, he's very familiar with the guidelines of the program. The reimbursement for housing fits that, and it would be my recommendation that we honor these requests and let the opioid money be used for some of the purposes that it was to be used for.
Correct. Either, yeah, I don't, you think of the initial.
I would make the motion, or I would entertain a motion, and then if you initial those off, and we'll give them to the county to be processed.
I would move for a motion to support the request that Judge Winfrey's gave, and it's here for the opioid money.
I'll second. I have a motion second to approve the request for opioid funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Yeah, yeah, initial both of those, and we'll give those. May have a meeting this afternoon with another organization, and after that, depending on how that comes out, and if they have a request, I'll bring that in or invite them. And I'm not sure what's going to take place, or if, or what the request could come up to. All right, next item, there are the senior tax freeze applications. I think we have two stacks there. Looks like those have been vetted, and they're ready for approval.
And we don't have a top sheet on that.
They don't have a top sheet.
On these? Yeah. So these are all renewals?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe there might be one stack renewal and one stack renewal, but these are, they're still.
I think they're mixed.
They're mixed, yeah, they are. I got a hundred and ninety-three in this one.
Oh, she's already got one.
I got one thirty-two on that one.
Oh, there you go.
So I'd make a motion to approve both stacks of the one ninety-three versus the one thirty-two.
She had them in two different, thinking last week, I don't know what happened.
She, we got a week to handle ourselves, yeah.
So she had one ready for last week, and then we didn't have that meeting because you guys were at training. And then she had this week's ready, so they became two separate piles.
So do we need a cover sheet to sign off on, or are we initiating?
And I'll get you a cover sheet and initial that.
Okay, I had a motion.
I'll second it.
May have not heard the second, okay. Have a motion second to approve the senior applications as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Applications as presented. All right, gentlemen, next thing we're in is general county, county business.
Yeah, all that's mine. I was, it didn't matter.
Exactly.
Yeah, that has to do with a little bit of situation I've got out on Heisman Highway. I don't want to take the venture out also as well. Yeah.
I'll be right back.
You bet.
Lock the door.
It was, it was. So literal.
Got to have a little fun.
Yeah, yeah, really, that was the, I think that's the only thing that I had, was to change back from the twentieth, too, because they've rescheduled that deal, Jeff said again. So, uh.
The, the tenth, yeah.
Right. Other than that, it's just the, uh, ongoing process with the roads and stuff, which. Been visiting with Mike on others, a few things, I need to check on myself.
I think we are kind of finally maybe getting around the frost and the snow and.
Scott.
Well, the weather's helped us as well. Well, uh, I, I didn't get this on the agenda. This was a bid that we received last week, and we tabled it. And, uh, but we need to, uh.
Then on a rebar?
Yes, yeah, so, we had one, one bid. It was from, uh, Lebanon, uh, what, who's it from?
Lebanon Ready Mix.
Lebanon Ready Mix.
Lebanon Ready Mix.
So I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the bid that we received from Lebanon Ready Mix.
With that, same thing, so we've got here some stuff.
That was additional information that, uh, Roden Bridge had compiled, uh, for our review.
Prior to putting out for bids or after?
We only received the one, one bid. So, if we, if we reject that, we can put it back out for bid. But, um, but that is the sole bid that we, that we received. And it was the only sealed bid that we received.
Yeah. I would actually do the process of how the bidding works for sealed bids and having to put out there for people that, with the way that process is, I like the way I make a motion to approve the bid that we received from Lebanon Ready Mix.
And after seeing this, I will second it.
Yeah, I have a motion second to approve the bid for rebar from Lebanon Ready Mix for an amount of, uh, it was five ton, and was, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. He had a motion second for a discussion. Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, bid approved. Okay.
Oh, I do have the two generators with me today. I'm going to take them back over and put them in the warehouse for now?
Yeah. That's the corpse generator and the predator.
And it does have a couple of run-tend plugs, I thought.
Nice.
Okay. Anything else? No, then I'll give you a second round. We had, uh, we had a, a minor, uh, accident at the Roden Bridge, uh, office here. Probably back during the, the snow. So, one of our coworkers, uh, with Roden Bridge equipment damaged one of the other coworker's vehicles. And so, we, uh, we received one quote from one company. Uh, and I suggested that we get two. So I'm going to pass these down for you to look at this. Uh, our deductible is, is greater than these, uh, bids or these, uh, quotes. Uh, so it would be in our best interest not to file a claim and to pay these directly. But I have two quotes for that particular vehicle. Get a copy of this, and I'll give this back to you.
Distributed, that's the total. Maybe to say another caller, you know, can I table on that sheet? A lot of times when they bid, when they do stuff like that, you never know.
This is from Rock Best, uh, with more. Another bid will be there for the recent repairs. And this is from Ted Morse. Linda?
Yes, sir.
Um. This note, it's stuck on the front of the Ed Morse, do you know anything about that? Okay, is it only for this one?
Uh, let, let me see it. Eric, I, uh, it has to be was out, but this is a rock best note to be more reliable. But that's, uh, Mike Cheeks' notes. And, uh, it just pertained to that one, that one quote, yeah.
Yeah. Could be very comparable.
Yeah, what was this over here? Extra for? Like, like two, or four, parts, that made a part, uh.
I didn't see it in there. Did you see that point there, the two sixty-seven? See what I'm saying?
I'm curious what their records are. Line one, or line two.
See, you've got two.
Line two, there's that, okay. Line four, there's that. So I think that's actually three fifteen subtotals.
See, it's your twenty-eight to two sixty-seven. See, I was just looking over here.
So is that down here?
I think that's what that is together, right there.
Yes, is that part of that?
It should be, I'm trying to.
They were just giving.
That's a subtotal, and let me take a grand here. So here's your subtotal. Which could be all of this with that. Right? Three, five, another three fifteen. Mm-hmm. Yep, that's what that'd be. So that's already in there underneath them lines. And our deductible, you said it's for those is greater than, so. So are we going to, with that, will we let the, uh, personal vehicle owner take it to either one of these here that he feels most comfortable with? Or we still have him take it to just whichever one we decide? How's that work?
Well, I think, yeah, it gets for us, yeah. Uh, but, but the purpose for multiple, uh, bids was just to, uh, what I think we would normally do in, in our businesses would be, uh, you know, get, get a couple of bids.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, and evaluate those, and, um.
Yeah.
What's the difference there, two, two, three hundred dollars, something like that?
Yeah, about three hundred. Pretty something.
You know what? One option that might be that we, um, we approve the lower amount.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Yeah.
And then let the coworker decide where they want to, want to take it.
Mm-hmm. We want a motion on this?
Well, I, I, I think so, and then.
I'd make a motion to approve it from Starren's Auto this time.
Okay.
I'm following Randy's logic.
Well, and, and so, then I was going to say, if the coworker, uh, refutes that, then, you know, I guess we can, we can bring that back up for discussion. They, what was indicated to me, they did not have an in- an initial preference. They would dislike their vehicle restored to its, uh, previous condition.
Yeah.
So, I haven't spoke to any in- individual on this that's, uh, involved, other than through purchasing.
And with that, I mean, if he decides to take it somewhere else, we can all go and pay up to the amount stated, what we're approving in my motion.
Yes.
If he wants to go somewhere else, he can make a difference.
And would we believe that because we have two quotes, it's been inspected by two different, uh, companies, right? I mean, that's just common sense.
Correct.
And so if the individual hesitated that they would not want it repaired at a certain place, they may have voiced an opinion then that, that, uh, you know, I'd just prefer not to, to have the work from there. So, I don't know that there's any objection. We'll find out, but if I have a motion to approve that, then I would entertain a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve the little bid for the repair work on the damaged vehicle. Any further discussions? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion clear. I think we give this to, uh, purchasing and let them notify the owner of the vehicle. Okay, other general county business. We can come back if you think something. Other than that, public comments, items listed on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to routine business. Did, did you have a chance to review the accounts payable a little once? Any questions on those?
No, sir.
Linda, you have payroll or abstracts or work boards here all the way up?
We didn't go over any, like, we just named toward six-one, six-four, six-four, six-five. Yeah, we need to, we gotta get that sale bill written up, and I'm going to go ahead and get with, uh, maintenance, road bridge. What other amenities?
Sheriff's Department.
Whatever else we have, who else can we?
So, I guess I'd like to make a comment like that. Are we trying to get this done before a quarter or before the end of the month? Do we need to give ourselves a little bit more time? Is there a set date? Is there a date better than another? I'm just throwing it out.
Right now, like.
It does look like we're getting a little further, a little further. Uh, not bothering, but just digging deeper into it. I'm just trying to keep them getting in a hurry.
Well, I don't know that we dug any deeper into it. We'd let all the other amenities know that I thought that, and I had stated to them that I need to know by the end of this week, so I get a sale bill made. If we're going to try to have an auction on the fifth of April, was the plan, and I think we're still on for that for now. That's where I've got a little bit of help there.
I'm, I'm leaning after you, but I guess I'm opening up a window if we need to.
Right, well, if that's what we're doing.
Take this a little further down the road.
Then you have the now's the time to figure out.
Yes, if it helps.
If that's what we're planning on doing for a moment. Another week or two, if that's what you get into, is you get into even busier times, and everything hits.
Yeah.
So, yeah. What's your thoughts?
Um, you know, we just.
Right now, I, I have the other help, a different auctioneer to help out. We'll go from there. That seems to be going good.
And you probably got a rock.
Well, I mean, when you've got somebody that, that does a lot around in the community, you know, you try not to, you, you, you work on scheduling. When it is, I did this three, four weeks ago, to figure out which ones would work. And he had the three dates that I had available that I was thinking for, which would have been the end of March into the second week of April. Two of those he already had booked, or four weeks, he already had booked up.
Okay.
So we had two to work off of, so I took the latter, to make better weather.
So, the answer to your question, if we don't drive it, it's not going to get done.
Absolutely.
So, we need to go ahead and stick to your schedule and, uh, and make it happen.
And have we had any response from the health department on their trailer or trailers, and their what?
I've left a message with the administrative health department, and I'd get to hear back from that individual. That was probably three weeks ago.
Okay, so, do, okay.
Joe, back to, um, road maintenance. Did I hear, uh, Mike say that he was moving some, uh, resources over to help on your side?
Yeah, he mentioned something to be on that. He was going to say something, but Eric, pull us a couple extra hands.
Is Edison on that? I just got another text.
Uh.
I, I know I put in a work order for it, I think. You got a copy of that?
Yes, I did. That he, he did not mention Edison, but I think it would be on that, and that's why he's pulling the extra graders over to help because of what we've got all going with Memphis and several of the others, for that to get covered and get caught up before anything else happens.
Okay.
Uh, especially since we still have Grader forty-five down. And I'm actually going to put a call in today to Ryan on that. Because they're waiting to see if they can pull some injectors from the manufacturing line, which I know it could be possible. They've got grader sitting there on their lot, and I believe, uh, some of those are actually allocated to us to become here the next month or two. Sitting there for delivery. And, uh, I don't know, we can pull some parts from there and get our grader up and running. But with that also, I'm still having the understanding that we have other operators that are still not released from the doctor yet.
It's an honest statement.
Well, one is a, a truck driver though, though. He's not an operator for the grader, correct? So right now, without having our, our grader operator and not having our grader, that we just got a filler guy that can run the grader, if the grader was up and running. Which then again, would also still help out on getting the west side territory taken care of, if that machine was working. So, would probably have to pull two from the other side to do that, if we had one there that was up and functioning. So I, I think that we need to, thank you, Dan. I just think there are other options there to get our machine back up and running. Possibilities, whether they do it or not. So. The, he may know, who is he may? Okay, that we're talking about on that part. So, he should know something within this week? Cause I haven't gotten this. Okay, that's what I was going to say. I thought there was another doctor visiting or something. They done some other testing or something, okay. Is there, uh, a deal here as far as for like the specials and stuff? Do they need to file something as far as for like their, their levies or anything else at this time to keep everything?
No, in July.
In July? So they have to file something in July?
Everybody has to file.
They all?
All the ones.
Okay. You bet. I just seen that here on that and.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, I spoke to Shane the other day, uh, very special one. Him, piece of his equipment, and one of his guys actually helped to get that fuel burner put up and set at Roden Bridge. So they brought over their, their, or a forklift or something, because I don't know what was going on with ours, or, or, or what accident was there, but Mike did request it. They had a minute, and Shane, one of his guys, got a link with Brad, came over assisted in that, in the installation, so. Speaking with him on that, but he had asked something on that, so.
Can I get you here just a minute? It, it's kind of.
It must be.
It might be.
It might be.
I'm gonna make a motion to that, Randy.
You're gonna make a motion, make a motion to.
For brief recess?
Yeah.
Motion for brief recess?
You, you might need you, so.
Huh?